Welcome, everyone. As I call to order the December 1st, 2025 Regular Board of Alderman Meeting, would everybody please join with me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Plufka.
Here.
Alderwoman Tice.
Here.
Alderwoman Gold.
Here.
Alderwoman Sims.
Here.
Alderman Lockmiller.
Here.
Alderman Gould.
Here.
Alderwoman Harder.
Here.
Alderman Erger.
Here.
Thank you. Next up is the approval of the agenda. Do we have any changes to the agenda? If not, there will be... Any objection approving saying by acclamation seeing none? We so approve. Thank you. Next up is the public hearing. We have one item, and that is a public hearing on Kinder Care Facility Conditional Use Permit and Site Development Plan at 8109 and 8111 Manchester Road. So with that, I will gavel open the public hearing.
To address the traffic impact, Lee Cannon is on Zoom if you have questions for him and the applicants are here tonight.
Okay. Is there going to be a presentation by the applicant on this tonight or not?
Yeah. I mean, they're here to speak.
No, I didn't know if there was going to be a formal application, you know, slideshow or anything like that. I'm not saying there needs to be. I just didn't know if there was. Are you wanting to do it now or are you wanting to do it when we take up the first read?
Well, that's up to you. Traditionally, we've done questions and further review and...
That's fine.
Yeah.
Okay. Do we have any questions for the applicant? Yes, Alderman Lockmiller.
Whitney, was notice given to the surrounding neighborhoods? And if so, were there any concerns voiced?
Yes, there was public notice for the first review at the Planning and Zoning Commission. We did not hear anything. It was during the Site Plan Subcommittee that they asked us to renotice it to try to get some public comment. So we did that for the last Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, and we have not heard anything.
Thank you.
Alderwoman Harder, make sure your microphone's on, please. Thank you.
Do they know about how many staff and teachers there will be and then about how many children? I know the children will come and go at different times, but just curious how many?
Yes. The capacity is 140 children, and there's...
I sound better the second time. Go ahead.
So there's a... It has a capacity. It's a 12,000-square-foot building at a capacity of 140 children and 22 employees at their busiest staff shift.
Will they start with that amount? Or would add on as the children come?
Hi, Mike Hager, Quattro Development, the applicant. They typically start in, I'm giving a guess, probably around that 80% occupancy range and then try to continue throughout their first semester. And then some of the staff are part-time throughout the day, so it's rarely 22 people or staff members there at the exact same time because they are open from 6:30 to 6:30, Monday through Friday. So there are some overlap, part-time members, et cetera.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mike, before you sit back down, because this is the first time... No, you can come back up. Because this is the first time that the board is hearing this, it did run through the planning and zoning process, two meetings plus a site review?
Correct.
Okay.
Site Plan Subcommittee and then two meetings at the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Okay. And for the residents who are watching, since this is the first time it's being brought before the board, I think you've already answered the one question. The hours of operation are 6:30 to 6:30, Monday through Friday?
Correct.
And what's the square footage of the building?
1,200 square feet.
12,000?
12,000.
12,000, okay. And about 144 students you're looking at?
140.
140, okay. And this is at the west of Porter, where Porter intersects with Manchester?
Correct. The northwest corner of Porter and Manchester Road.
One of those lots is primarily grass?
Correct.
Okay. All right. That's all I had. Anybody else?
Thank you.
Yes, Alderwoman Tice.
Could you talk a little about the recommendation that came out about the left turn? And it appeared from reading this that it's just in the afternoon that you're looking to restrict the left turn out of Porter onto Manchester?
Correct.
And could you talk about that or maybe Lee?
Lee, if you're online, yes.
Hello. Yes, Lee Cannon with CBD. Just as a matter of, for the record, I completed my work for the city of Brentwood, not for the applicant, so it's for the city directly. During the PM commuter rush hour today, there's very low volume that use this intersection at Porter to go in or to go out from Manchester Road. But even those low volumes, they do not get gaps in the traffic to make efficient left turns. That's today. It operates at what we call the local service F. So adding any traffic to that is going to exacerbate that condition. And one of the very simple thoughts that we had for that was to restrict that left turn movement, but only in the timeframe, say, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m., something in that range. In the morning, there are more availability to turn left. And even as you add in the traffic leaving the kinder care facility, those left turn opportunities are available to be made safely and efficiently.
There is also the recommendation that limiting, have a sign, the city to establish a sign that says "local traffic only" headed left up Porter to address any neighborhood concerns about additional traffic through the neighborhood.
Great. And so then, what's the mechanism for us to do that? Is that part of this application that there would be no left turn from 4:00 to 6:00 and the left turn up Porter? Or do we do that later as construction is completed and the building is opened?
We would have to do that later as a separate ordinance, you know, prior to the opening of the...
Great, thank you.
Soon after the opening of the building.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Alderman Gould?
Just as a... I mean, how is that enforced?
That would be up to the police to enforce it.
If there's an ordinance, then the police would be able to traffic, ticket whoever they stop. That's how it would be enforced.
So we add it into the ordinance?
Yes.
In an effort to be able to enforce it if there becomes a problem?
Absolutely.
Okay.
As Lee had pointed out during the Planning and Zoning Commission, Porter Avenue doesn't... There's no easy access out of that neighborhood except back onto Manchester Road.
Right.
So we do find that, however, the kinder care is generally mostly local residents that utilize their facilities and services. So we didn't want to just do a no-left-turn-only. But we do think that once someone does that once, they're not likely to do that again if they're not local.
Yeah. And then, as far as the operation of a kinder care, I'm assuming, like most childcare, early childcare, those, it's not like you pick, you have to drop off at a certain time and you have to pick up at a certain time, right? I mean, kids are dropped off and picked up at various times throughout the day.
Absolutely. They, you know, their peak time is between 7:00 and 9:00 a.m. in the morning, and their peak time is between 4:00 and around 5:30 in the evening. But it is literally when the parents are ready to pick her up. So it is not like a traditional elementary school when it's, you know, 3:00, the bell rings, and there's parents lined up.
Right, right. There's not a huge queue.
There's no huge queues. They average around... Each pickup and drop-off averages between four and five minutes. And the parents take their children into the facility, and then a teacher will greet them. And likewise, on the pickup, the parents go into the facility, get their children from the teacher, there's a handoff, and then into the car, and then they exit.
Okay, thank you. Alderwoman Gold?
Am I correct in seeing there's about 30 parking spots? So it'd be 22 for staff at the max plus drop-off and pickup. Am I counting that right?
I believe there's 38.
Yeah, 38 to 40.
Okay, so there's enough not to have spillage into the neighborhood.
Correct.
Correct. And we talked to kinder care corporate who, you know, is a large publicly-traded childcare operator, and they're comfortable in that 35 to 40 range for this type of operation for this facility. That would include, obviously, staff. And they, I forgot the exact percentage, but they noticed that most staff, not all drive, about, I think, like 75% drive, and then some take either public transit or rideshare or drop-offs. So, you know, it wouldn't be 22 spaces are always filled by staff, leaving 16 available. It really is less than that.
Second question. If we were to restrict off of Porter Avenue, would we have a second or another notice going out to the residents that, in that area, to let them know this is going up for a vote before we do it? If we're to restrict traffic turning left, we would do a separate notice specifically calling out, "We're about to restrict traffic turns"?
Well, that is a condition of this conditional use permit. That's condition number four in the conditional use permit in section 3, 3 sub 4. That's a condition right now of local traffic only on northbound Porter, along with limiting the left turn lane in the PM. But if we're going to amend our code, our traffic code, to have a specific limitation, then that would be a separate matter. I don't think we would have a public hearing on that. We would just, that would be the course of business.
I would also note that this, you know, our facility is only open Monday through Friday. We're trying to keep the effects, the spillover effects onto the neighborhoods at minimum. This facility is not open on the weekend.
Oh, okay.
Anybody else? And what is your role here tonight?
I'm the head of our development team at Quattro.
Okay. So you're not employed by kinder care?
I am not.
Okay. So I'm not sure if you're going to be able to answer this question because of that. But you were saying that the drop-offs usually are between 7:00 and 9:00. Is it fair to say that 100% of the students, 100% of those 140 students are dropped off between those two hours?
I would say it's less than 100%. There are some students who also do part-time half-day. And there are also some students who do either a Tuesday, Thursday, or a Monday, Wednesday, Friday, two to three days a week. So they offer kind of flexibility for parents and family situations that don't just need childcare from, you know, Monday through Friday, you know, 9:00 to 5:00.
Okay. And the drop-off, again, it's a requirement that the parents actually park the car. There's not a drop-off service where...
There's no shuttle bus, or there's no extracurricular where they're busing kids off premises, et cetera. And it's always funny because I said this before in the Planning and Zoning Commission. I have a four and a two-year-old, so they're not at a kinder care facility, but they're at a facility that operates very similar to this with regards to pickup and drop-offs. And, you know, having a two-year-old, I know you want to keep drop-offs as fast as possible. So quite literally, it's like, quick, here you go, boom, you sign in sheet, here's your backpack, and go. My wife tends to linger. That doesn't always have as good a result, in my opinion, but it is a pretty quick turnover just because of the nature of the public.
Any other questions? We'll open it up to public. Whitney, did you have something?
Well, I just wanted to say that they have requested a first and second reading if there's not any major concerns, just due to the holiday and winter schedule and weather concerns.
Okay. Anybody in the public care to speak during the public hearing portion of this? Do we have anybody online by chance?
No one interested in speaking.
Okay, thank you. So with that, I'm going to close the public hearing, and we will bring this up during the new business. Next up is citizen comments. Anybody in the public care to address the board on any topic? Now is the time to do so. All we ask is that you come to the podium, state your name and address, and you'll be given up to three minutes. Or you can do it online.
I have one online.
Yes.
Karen Smith.
Okay. Karen, if you could, hopefully this will work. Okay, just unmute when you get a chance, Karen. Okay?
I did.
Yep, we can hear you.
So I had my hand up before when you were talking about the kinder care. It probably wasn't seen, or I didn't get up in time. So my comment really has to do with that. And just a caution, I know that this is not an elementary school, and a kinder care is different. But with the drop-off, it's more the pickup in the afternoon, and even after, I think it's the after-school program. You know, those parents, I think, are rushing to try and get there before it closes. I don't know if there's penalties if you, you know, don't have your child picked up by the time that the place closes. But, you know, they do park extensively on the streets, and I don't know if McGrath doesn't have enough parking places, and this kinder care will have sufficient parking. But they do park on the streets, making it hard, you know, visibility very difficult, getting in and, you know, moving around that area, getting out of Harrison onto high school, and then getting from high school onto Harrison. And they're frantic. They're not supposed to go in, use the entrance or the curb cut that's on high school for getting into that intersection. And they're only supposed to exit out of that curb cut, but they go in and out, you know, driving like crazy, I think, to try and get their kids before the place closes. So just forewarning you to try and mitigate the concerns that you're going to be hearing from your Porter residents if that's not addressed. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Karen. Anybody else?
No one else.
Okay. Then we will move on to the mayor and alderman reports. First up is the mayor. I just have a few things. Excuse me. Number of events that are coming up, it's that time of the year, our favorite time of the year. I said it was before the favorite time of the year was the budgeting season, and we're kind of still in that, I guess. But, you know, this is always the fun part of living in Brentwood. We have a number of fun events and activities coming up. First of all, my little prop here is a reminder that, beginning today, we are accepting donations for the Mayor's for Meals Food Drive that the Municipal League of Metro St. Louis was able to start back up with the St. Louis Area Food Bank. And it starts actually on December 11th, but we have decided to start it today, December 1st. And so we have a container out in the vestibule of City Hall, and we ask that people just, where should you go to one of our five terrific grocery stores, if you could, just pick up a few more items and drop them off at City Hall? Again, you'll have until December 23rd to do that. It is greatly appreciated, but not just limited to Brentwood. There are many other food drives going on and food pantries, and everybody is in need of that. So if you could do that, that would be wonderful. Secondly, this coming Saturday is Brentwood's annual holiday party and tree lighting from 5:00 to 7:00. This is, I think, our third year at the Brentwood Park, which is a terrific venue, much improved over the Ruck Center, although we don't have the opportunity to ice skate down there. But Eric has promised me that the snow is done, and we will not be having any snow on Saturday night. In fact, I think he said it's a balmy 55 degrees. So thank you, Eric. 62, okay, thank you. I'm hearing that Santa will be making an appearance. There will be wagon rides. Caroling, is Caroling by Washington University again? If you go for no other reason, you have to come to listen to those carolers from Washington University, proud alum. I was never on the Caroling group there, of course. But they do an incredible job. It is well worth it. Again, if there's no other reason to show up, it's worth it just to hear them sing. There will be photo opportunities. There's a juggling show, face painting, light appetizers, and Trader Joe's hot chocolate, once again. Unfortunately, this is only for Brentwood residents. We had to put a limit on that. So if you could abide by that, that would be much appreciated. We are currently taking the Toys for Tots Drive by our fire department again. And there is, I think you're accepting donations at the firehouse. There has to be new and unwrapped toys. This is a wonderful program, the Toys for Tots. It's nothing new. It's been around for many, many years. And it culminates with a fill-the-ambulance event on December 13th at the Target in the Brentwood Promenade, sometime in the afternoon. Or is it all day, chief?
Yeah.
In the afternoon. Bring, again, a new unwrapped toy to the ambulance and help fill the ambulance for, with toys for children. And then finally, an event that started as a result of COVID during the epidemic, which is now, quickly has become a resident favorite, and that is the Santa Parade, taking place on December 12th and December 13th. It is, as the name implies, it's a parade with our fire trucks, our police vehicles. And once again, Santa is going to be presumably on one of the fire trucks. And so wards one and four will be on Friday, the 12th, and wards two and three will be on Saturday, the 13th, and that begins at 5:00. The detailed map you can find on the city's webpage and Facebook page. Probably the Facebook page is... Okay, go to Facebook, type in City of Brentwood, MO, and you will find the Facebook page for the city, and there's a great map for those routes. And that is it for the mayor. Alderman Plufka.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Public Safety Committee will meet Wednesday, December 17th. That's a change from our normal date. It'll still be at 5:30, and we'll still be here in the chambers. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderwoman Tice?
As a reminder, the Ways and Means Committee meeting will not meet this Thursday. We will meet again in January.
Thank you. Alderwoman Sims?
No report.
Alderwoman Gold?
No report.
Alderwoman Lockmiller?
Yes, the Public Works Committee will meet here December 11th. That's a Thursday at 6:00 in the evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderwoman Gould?
No report.
Alderwoman Erger?
No report.
And Alderwoman Harder?
No report.
Okay. That brings us down to the city administrator report, which we have none. Got a bit of a streak going on there now, I think. Brings us down to item eight, the consent agenda. We have a number of items on there. Any questions about any of the items or any request to remove any of the items from the consent agenda? If not, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Yes.
Alderwoman Tice?
Yes.
Alderwoman Gold?
Yes.
Alderwoman Sims?
Yes.
Alderwoman Lockmiller?
Yes.
Alderwoman Gould?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harder?
Yes.
Alderwoman Erger?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. On to old business. We have one item, and that is the amended Bill 6578 for the fiscal year 2026 adopted budget. How are we handling that?
I believe everyone received the memo over the weekend. We are asking that we not do the second read on the budget due to an error that was found. We have communicated the error and the impact on the fund balance, and just wanted to give everybody a certain amount of time to process it and ask any questions that you may have. Overall, the budget is still balanced. Departments that were missing some dollars, once again, we found them, we corrected them. The memo's been sent out. Any immediate questions?
Well, just for clarification, when you said it was missing dollars, if you could just... just, it's not that it was missing dollars necessarily, it was, there was an overlook, is that?
There was an oversight. That was correct. There was an error found in one of the labor models, and the error's been corrected, and two departments were impacted, three overall, two fully, the administration, the police department, and planning for just a reclassification of a position, so.
So in general, our expenses that we thought we were going to have total expenses are a little more than what we thought they were going to be.
That is correct.
And because we found that, that mistake.
That is correct.
It's good that we found that out now, instead of...
It is, it is good that we found that.
Okay, well, great. Do we have any questions? Yes, Alderwoman Tice.
So I'd just like to make a comment on this. This was a, it was definitely an oversight. How, thankfully, it was caught now. It should have been caught by staff. It should have been caught at the Ways and Means Committee. Thankfully, it was caught now. The balance, the budget's still balanced. Our revenues still exceed our expenditures for next year. It gets tighter quicker coming up in the next few years because there were positions that were missing. That's, that's why, that's what the oversight was. It was sort of four positions plus the reclassification. So when you add four jobs over the next few years, it costs money. So, but next year's budget is balanced, and just wanted to reassure everyone that that's the case.
Yeah, and I think that's a great point to make, because when we talk about balance, there's a couple of ways to balance a budget under state statute. As, as Alderwoman Tice pointed out, this is a balanced budget where revenues still exceed expenditures. Another way to balance it is if your revenue's below your expenditures, you can fill in that gap out of reserves. State statute permits municipalities to do that, and that's, that's not what we're doing. There are some municipalities have a balanced budget, but the way they do it is they pull from their reserves in order to get that, that balance. But we're not, we're not, we don't have to do that, which is wonderful. Okay, any other questions? Do we need a motion to that effect to table this, or?
Since it is on the agenda, why don't we have a motion to postpone the second reading and final approval to the December 15 meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Michelle. Brings us down to new business. We have two items. First up is Resolution 1575, a resolution adopting a revised policy for administration of the city's sewer lateral repair program. Is Dan presenting on that? There we go.
This item was originally brought up during Ways and Means during the budget process. Then it was taken up at the Public Works Committee. So if you're not familiar with the policy, there's all kinds of information in your packet. But starting in 2018, we put in a threshold of $7,250, and in order to pay back the funds that were borrowed during the program when it had no ceiling, we lowered that in 2019 to 3,500 per calendar year per address. It's remained at 3,500 since 2019. We've made some other changes to it, but really, it hasn't changed much, you know, in the past six or so years. So I put together in the packet, there's several trend graphs and fun information year over year of what we did. I just wanted to see, like, where we were kind of balancing out, looking at the averages, looking at the median. When you look holistically from, like, the year 2018 to present 2025, we're doing roughly 30 repairs a year. Those 30 repairs cost, on average, $3,412 to the city. The average cost to a resident's about $1,172. So looking at all that, we brought this up at Public Works, as I said, and then we looked at what the incoming money can be used for with the program. There's basically $126,000 that can be spent for reimbursement limits. If you're looking at the $3,500, which it is currently, you could do 36 repairs in a year. But again, we're trending towards 30. So then we thought, well, what if you bumped it up to 4,000? Looks like 31 and a half repairs. Then we tried 4,500, got to 28 repairs. The suggestion was split the difference. 4,250 gets you 29.6, which is 30 rounded up. So that change was incorporated into that resolution. You know, the rest of it stayed the same, but we wanted to see if we could increase that to 4,250 per calendar year. We're still only getting the same amount from the county. It's $50 per household. In the case of Brentwood IV, some are at 25, some are at 50, and some are at zero, but they don't get to participate.
And that $50 is collected on the real estate taxes?
Correct.
Okay. And it's been set at 50 forever?
Long as I've been here, and that's nine years.
Okay. Yeah. And that's set by state statute. That's what I'm getting to.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, we don't have any control over that.
Correct. And if we did make the change, you know, I thought we'd make it effective, you know, making it easy to be January 1 of '26, unless you wanted to change it to some other time.
Okay. Any questions? Yes, Alderman Lockmueller.
Yeah, the Public Works Committee, with the help of Dan, he put together some great schedules, came to this, raising it from the 3,500 to 4,250. If you look at the fund itself, it's got a considerable amount of, of reserves in it above what we normally recommend keeping. So we thought, you know, if we, even going to this amount, we can still do 30 repairs if we have to dip into reserves for some, you know, rainy day type situation. We have the reserves there to use. So we feel pretty comfortable with going to this 4,250 for the residents.
Great work. Alderwoman Tice.
Yeah, and I'll just say this all came about during the Budget Forum in Ways and Means, and we had a resident come and ask about this, which made us look at the fund and realize there was a reserve and take it to Public Works. So those resident comments are valuable.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we need a motion to approve Resolution 1575.
So moved.
Second. Any, any discussion? Do we need a roll call on this, Mr. City Attorney? Okay. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and the resolution is approved. Thank you, everybody. Brings us down to the second item under new business, and that's Bill Number 6579. Could we get a first read by title only, please?
Bill Number 6579, an ordinance amending Article 1 of Chapter 505 of the Municipal Code by the addition of a new section, 505.110, relating to removal of trees located in the right-of-way, city parks, and other public spaces.
Okay.
Good evening. This came about because there have been several instances, instances of residents removing streets and the trees in the public right-of-way, or developers removing trees in the public right-of-way without proper approval. We looked at the code, and there is really no fine for such. So we wanted to create, add that to the code, and we based it on what the MSD would provide to the city on theirs. We simplified the overall cost estimates of that to the chart you have in the packet. And that would be as established by the Parks and Recreation Department for similar cost DBH diameter tree.
Wouldn't you explain how that would work?
So if we caught them after the fact, we would base it on, we would have to determine what the size of that tree was in the cost estimate to ask that they reimburse the city for that. If it's caught during plan review, then we would provide them with that cost estimate beforehand before approval of any permits.
Okay. And what, what, if any efforts, will the city take to educate the residents that the tree lawn, what's going on in the tree lawn belongs to the city?
We can certainly work with Michelle Boyer on providing that information.
Also in the packet for the folks who pick up a permit, that information would be put in there as well.
Yeah, I'm, I'm talking more about, just in general, if someone's not doing work on their house, and they just, they get tired of a, a tree in their tree lawn, and they decide to take it down, you know, what, what notice do they have that they can't do that?
Well, that has happened. That was the instance.
Right.
So we can certainly work with Michelle Boyer on protecting the tree lawn, that, where their property line is. They are to maintain the high grass and weeds within that tree lawn, but they just can't remove a tree.
Yeah, okay. I think that's probably not a bad idea, because I see signs in tree lawns, you know, there are a lot of things in the tree lawns, and I think people don't realize that, again, they don't, that's, that's cities.
Right.
Property. Okay, Alderman Gould.
I know we have, I think, an assessment of city-owned trees, you know, there's some website or something, right?
It's on the city website, yes. All the city trees.
Do we update that, and, and do those have the diameter of the trees?
Yes.
Associated with them?
They do. It's up to date.
So there wouldn't be, I mean, other than a, we, we can go back and, and find some
evidence of, of what tree was where, if, if we find one that has been removed and stump
ground up and all that. Okay.
And does that extend to residents putting trees in the tree lawn? Is there any prohibition against that?
I've never had that instance come up.
Eric can answer that question.
Okay.
Might be better, yeah.
Yeah, it is something that the city wants to be able to do themselves and maintain. Now, we do ask and work with some homeowners once we plant trees. A lot of times, they'll be very generous and help with watering and mulching and things like that. We have had instances of people contacting us and saying that they'd like a tree placed in the tree lawn, and we work with them and try and figure out how quickly we can get a tree. I mean, someone who wants a tree in their tree lawn, we're usually pretty quick about getting that in that next planting cycle.
And have we ever had a situation where a resident just doesn't contact the city? They just go out and they plant a tree in the tree lawn?
They do, and then we have the, we, we go out and we have the conversation with them. It's like, hey, you know, that's technically in the city's right-of-way, as long as the tree matches our, our preferred tree list. Done. We usually work with them on that, yeah.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that whichever, whatever tree they plant is one that is an approved tree by the city, so we don't get those dreaded trees that no one seems to like. Yes, Alderman Harder. Did you have a question? No? Okay, I'm sorry. Oh, Alderman Goode.
And so this policy for tree removal doesn't apply to diseased trees or trees creating a public hazard. So if a neighbor has a tree that is actively dying, they can call, call the city for removal or have it removed without a fine.
Correct.
Or if the tree is causing a major trip hazard or other major, like, damage to...
We can have multiple things that you just said. Eric, do you want to explain all that?
I'll try to remind me if I missed any of them. Any, any tree in the tree lawn is maintained by the city, so our urban forester will go out and check the health of the tree. We do have a rotation. We go and check every tree by ward once every four years. We go by ward. And there's other times where we get contacts, and we'll go out and we check and look. If we find that the tree is diseased, we will then put out the notification that we will remove the tree. If you're talking about trees within the private property, we, we won't do that specifically. But if we're, if we're contacted about any public tree, we'll go out, we'll assess the tree, and then we'll make determination to move forward with that.
And for the damaged tree, like, say the tree is starting to destroy its sidewalk or destroy, like, a driveway or something, they could contact you and be like, hey, this tree is becoming a hazard more than it's becoming beneficial.
It has to be a public, it has to be a public hazard. We, you know, we try very hard not to just take down trees, take down trees. A, a big example is we have a lot of people who want to remove every gumball tree in the city because of the gumballs, and that is something we will not do, something that when we wrote the policies and procedures 10 years ago, probably at this point, we made sure that we put out a strict accordance of what would count as a diseased or hazardous tree. So that is in the policies, the tree policies.
Okay, so this policy will only impact healthy trees, someone just didn't like the tree. But if the tree is unhealthy or a hazard, there's no problem removing it.
Correct. Yeah, and that's something the city does. Where we see this mostly is a lot of times where either a new house is being built, or they're doing renovations to the house, and for whatever reason, it's the driveway. They always want to change the driveway of where that's located, and that usually is in a place where a tree is located.
Yeah, but, but I think, again, the key is, we don't want residents just making that determination of their own. They need to contact the city and say, hey, there's a tripping hazard, there's, it's diseased. Let the city make that determination.
Yep.
Yeah, if not six branches fall from a great height on my car, I would like to stop, kind of thing. Maybe it's not a good thing.
Yep. Yeah, we will go out and assess, and if we have to, we'll even bring in our contractor, Dave Tree, if it's something that we want to get a second opinion on.
All right. Any other questions? Are we wanting a second read on this, or?
If it is the wish of the board.
Anybody on the board care to make a motion for a second read on Bill Number 6579? If not, we will take it up at the last meeting of the year. I see no motions, so I think we will go on and keep that as a staggered bill. Thank you. The next item is Bill Number 6580. Can we get a first read by title only, please?
Bill Number 6580, an ordinance approving the site development plan and authorizing the issuance of a new conditional use permit for kinder care to operate a daycare facility at 8109 and 8111 Manchester Road in the MC Manchester Corridor Commercial District.
Thank you. Anybody on the board have any questions? Alderman Plufka.
Thank you. So as I understand this, maybe this is directed to Whitney, I suppose. As I understood the discussion during the, the, the public hearing, thank you, earlier tonight, the, one of the restrictions that was, that was talked about in terms of traffic calming was a no-left turn between the hours of 4:00 and 6:00 in the afternoon. And I, I was assuming that, I was assuming I understood that to be no-left turn out of the parking lot.
No, that's no-left turn from Porter to Manch, on, onto Manchester.
Okay, so, but, okay.
There was also the left turn on, from out of the parking lot onto Porter would be assigned as local traffic only.
Okay, to go left.
Right.
Farther into the neighborhood, onwards. So my question is this. At that location, the width of Manchester Road is four lanes, correct? There is no dedicated turn lane there.
Correct.
So what about the additional traffic that we would anticipate in the mornings and in the evenings, coming east on Manchester Road and attempting to turn left across two lanes of westbound traffic on Manchester Road?
Lee, do you want to address that?
Sure. So as I identified in the traffic study, we evaluated the traffic at the intersection of Porter-Manchester. We identified that a, an eastbound left-turn lane meets MODOT's warrants for installation at that location. However, when MODOT rebuilt the road, based on right-of-way constraints, costs, et cetera, they determined that they weren't going to add left-turn lanes along the route. So that was identified in the traffic study as being warranted. The level of service calculations that we do indicate that the level of service for eastbound traffic will be just fine in allowing the lefts to be made from the through lane. And there is no, the westbound right-turn movement does not meet the warrant for an added lane.
Okay, but, so the expectation will be that either in the morning hours or the evening hours, as folks are coming to either drop off kids or pick up kids, there, there will be somewhat of a queue at Porter on the northernmost east, or the northernmost eastbound lane as it approaches Porter. That's the expectation?
Yes.
Okay. And do you, did, did your survey or, or your study demonstrate that you thought that that would be more congested in the morning hours, more congested in the evening hours? Or, or roughly the same?
In the morning hours, the existing and the build with kinder care for, for eastbound Manchester Road both operate at Level Service A. There's about a half a second change in the delay when you add in the left turns going in to Porter. In the, in the afternoon, those level of service for existing and build are B. And again, it's about a half a second delay average per vehicle added for the eastbound approach.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Goode.
So the only restriction would be on Porter. The neighbors could still use Melvin or go around the block to make a left turn if that's the morning commute they have, right? They just can't use Porter. The other streets are still available for left turn.
They could still use Porter.
For a left-hand turn.
Oh, yes.
So they just have to go around, the, the neighbors could just go around the block and make the left turn. It's just Porter we're limiting for that.
Just, right, during 4:00 to 6:00.
Okay. Okay.
And for the existing people that are there today, in the morning, there's currently six people in the morning peak hour that choose to turn left out, and two that choose to turn right out. In the afternoon, there's fifteen people that choose to turn left out, and eight that turn right out. That's existing volume, so extraordinarily low today.
Alderman Lockmueller.
Lee, do you remember, you know, the concern that the one resident voiced was parking along Porter? I believe there's no parking on Porter. You know, as it stands right now?
I don't know that there's much of a need to park along Porter today. There's no demand for that, but I do not know if it's signed in that way. What I might suggest is that you would see if it becomes a problem, because I don't believe it will. If you were going to drop off your, keep in mind, these children are from toddlers up to maybe four or five years old. This is pre-kindergarten children, so not a lot of parents are going to want to stop out on the curbside and then either take their kid in or take their kid out of the school. And I do believe that they have an adequate number of parking stalls on the site. So if it becomes a problem, I believe the city could market that you have the authority to do so.
Okay. And then regarding parking, you made a comment in your report that in trying to determine the number of spots, parking spots to be available, but there wasn't really any text regarding this type of usage, was that?
The city of Brentwood's code did not have the specific land-use daycare included in it. So CBB was asked to provide a recommended rate, and we used our industry standard ITE parking generation to provide that recommendation, and we are comfortable that the thirty-eight stalls will meet the needs based on the number of children.
Whitney, is that just the MC District doesn't stipulate?
It's, no, it's not included under the parking regulations, off-street parking regulations. There is no standard for a daycare facility. So I asked Lee to provide what is the industry standard for our review.
Anyone else? Alderman Gould.
Yes, there is another daycare facility along Manchester, just to the west of Manchester and Brentwood. Do we know how that compares as far as number of students and number of parking spaces and all of that? Have we, did we look at that one?
No, I'm sorry, I did, I'm not.
Okay. I just was curious on comparison. Thank you.
Any other questions? Alderman Lockmueller.
Maybe the applicant can kind of describe the retaining wall that's going to be needed as you cut into the hillside there?
Yes, there is, as you all know, a massive, massive amount of site work that's going to be needed for this site. Not only is there a very large retaining wall on the north end, you know, that'll also be extended along Porter as the site goes from north to south towards Manchester. There will be a sidewalk along Porter, and obviously fencing above the retaining walls to protect any residents from going over. I think with regards to the specific, yeah, retaining wall product, we're still trying to get our arms around the numbers. It will look something similar, very similar to these products shown, kind of in a, as opposed to a blank concrete precast. You know, we're trying to make it look a little bit elevated. We're trying to add some architectural flourishes, so to speak, some, you know, just look a little bit more like stone, understanding that it is, I believe, twenty feet tall in the far north?
Yeah.
Yeah, twenty feet tall.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three at the peak. This is a really challenging site. Not only the grade issue, there's also shallow bedrock that can be a challenge, and we're just, there is a lot of dirt that is going to be moved in this site. So we're trying to make, we've worked with city staff and the Planning Commission and Site Plan Subcommittee to try to hone in on the give and takes of just the site constraints that are there, to try to make both it pleasant to see from Manchester, but also for the neighbors who live in that neighborhood, you know, to have proper landscaping, to have proper lighting, and to have, you know, a fence that provides privacy for the neighbors that are adjacent to the north. We're trying to thread that needle of being practical with regards to the nature of the hardships of the site, because it is, it is definitely, you know, I've been with Crotro for seventeen years, we've developed over two hundred projects. This is the most challenging from a site work. I mean, we're in the Midwest. If we were, you know, in, you know, Pennsylvania, where there's a lot more topography, this is probably more standard, but, you know, it's pretty flat out here, and this is a pretty steep site. So we're just trying to kind of balance the site as best as possible and try to make it look aesthetically pleasing.
And then to the, once again, the citizen comment, did, do you have a time where you have to pick up your child or they'll be sold or something?
No, there, you know, six, that's a great question. Usually, it's the peer pressure of not having the last kid. You know, I've been, you know, there is a feeling of shame of not being the last person to pick up your children, but there are, I think, some financial penalties of consistently picking up your children late, just because staff has to, has to stay late, and there's licensing that goes into it. So there are, I guess, well, I'll say this, like, my, our daycare that I go to, it ends at six PM, by, if you pick up your child after five-thirty, they're typically some of the last there. This facility's operations hours are to six-thirty PM. It's much more generous than I think industry average, and I think, I don't anticipate there being a huge rush at six-twenty-nine for people to pick up their kids. Anybody who has a toddler knows that seven is usually when the wheels fall off anyways, so it's, you know, by that time, you hope to be in your house.
Anyone else? You heard the applicant say they would be interested in a second read if the board is so inclined. If so, I just need a motion to that effect.
I'll make that motion.
Second. So we have a motion and a second for a second read tonight. Any discussion on that motion? Alderman Teis.
No, I'm definitely supportive of this project, but I think it's a complicated enough one that I really would like to have this hold over for a second read, so I will be voting no on that.
Any other discussion? Alderman Lockmueller.
Well, I respect that, but I think we've had two notices go out, which is one more than we usually do. They've been before, planning and zoning twice, as well as site plan, and I think this is a great project compared to having retail or something there that has a constant traffic flow in and out. So I'd be supportive of the second motion.
Any other discussion? Alderwoman Sims.
What do you lose if we wait two weeks for a second read?
We don't lose anything, it was simply with the holidays, travel, and weather. I mean, I was, I, Crotro is based out of Chicago, we've obviously done extensive work in St. Louis, and I know Joel.
It was actually my request. It was purely because just knowing into the holidays, we're trying to be very sensitive of the current owner of the carburetor shop and being respectful of, he's winding down his business and leaving, and just, if something happens for the fifteenth meeting, if there's weather, if there's a storm, if there's something, and it pushes into January, just purely being sensitive, because we had so little turnout at the Plan Commission meetings, totally understanding of it.
Yeah, I mean, I'm in support of the project, too. It's
Purely because of the weather and pushing into January, and being respectful of, because that closing is in January.
Okay. But it's not like you're losing out on a contract or a rate or something?
Well, so the issue would be if we push into January, then you risk, we have to close on the ground before we have the final approvals.
Okay.
That would be the risk.
Any other discussion? If not, the motion on the table is for a second read. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Nay.
I've got a count of six to two, six in favor, two, I'm sorry, let's do a roll call on that, just so there's no question. I apologize, Alderwoman Sims.
Alderman Plufka.
Yes.
Alderwoman Teis.
No.
Alderwoman Gould.
No.
Alderwoman Sims.
No.
Alderman Lockmueller.
Yes.
Alderman Gould.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harder.
Yes.
Alderman Erger.
Yes.
Had a count of five yays, three nays. Okay, so the motion for a second read did pass. So with that, Mr. City Attorney, can we get a second read of Bill number sixty-five by, sixty-five eighty by title only, please?
Yes, Bill number sixty-five eighty, an ordinance approving the site development plan and authorizing the issuance of a new conditional use permit for kinder care to operate a daycare facility at eighty-one oh nine and eighty-one eleven Manchester Road in the MC Manchester Corridor Commercial.
Chair would entertain a motion to approve Bill number sixty-five eighty into ordinance form.
Motion to perfect.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Plufka.
Yes.
Alderwoman Teis.
Yes.
Alderwoman Gould.
Yes.
Alderwoman Sims.
Yes.
Alderman Lockmueller.
Yes.
Alderman Gould.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harder.
Yes.
Alderman Erger.
Yes.
Bill number six-five-eight-zero passes and now becomes ordinance number five-two-zero-three.
Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations. Brings us to the last item under new business, and that is Bill number sixty-five eighty-one. Can we get a first read by title only, please?
Bill number sixty-five eighty-one, an ordinance repealing ordinance number five-one-five-seven and establishing a revised compensation schedule for Brentwood employees and related matters and providing for the effective date of this ordinance.
Right, thank you. Tangela, if you would just identify yourself.
Good afternoon, Tangela Human Resources. The ordinance is to review and approve the twenty-twenty-six compensation plan. Attached for this with the memo was the twenty-twenty-six uniformed and non-uniformed pay grades. This is using the three-point-four-five, three-point-four-five percent CPI averaged through June, and it's taking the twenty-twenty-five salary grids, moving them to the twenty-twenty-six salary grids, using the five-year average CPI.
Okay. Any questions? Are we wanting a second read on this tonight?
No.
No?
Not until the fifteenth.
Fifteenth?
Yes.
Okay, well, great. Well, thank you very much. That brings us down to citizen comments. Anybody in the public care to address the board, now is the time to do so. We have anybody online?
None.
Nobody, okay. We do have a request to go into closed session, and that is pursuant to RS MO six-ten-point-zero-two-one, can't see my numbers here, I'm going to say three, subsection three, and maybe subsection one?
One and twelve.
One and twelve. All right, it's closed. Okay, subsections one and twelve, can we get a motion to that effect, please?
No move. Second.
Okay, any discussion? Roll call, please. And I'm sorry, into adjourned therefrom.
Alderman Plufka.
Yes.
Alderwoman Teis.